All right, well, I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. I'll go ahead and get underway. This is the third year that I've hosted this town hall meeting, and I think that they're important because at our city council meetings and at our committee meetings, there's an opportunity for public comment, and that is, of course, required, and we're happy to do that. But because of the nature of it, you know, there's not a lot of time. We have to limit that time to an extent. And so tonight's an opportunity, and I think we want to continue to do it, where we're not going to limit that time. We're going to go over some things that have happened in the past year that are certainly positive, some of the challenges we face, and some of the things we hope to accomplish moving forward. And then after that, I'll be happy to take your questions as long as you might have them. I, as a politician, you know, they always say that politicians spin things, and I guess the first year I had this, there was probably about 100 people here. The second year, there was about 50, and looking out here this evening, we've got about, I don't know, 15 or 20. So I'm going to take that as we're doing a lot of things right, and there's not as many people upset. Maybe I'm mischaracterizing that, but that'll be the spin, the only spin you'll hear this evening. I also want to take care of a couple of thank yous here this evening before I get underway. And first off, I would like to thank all of the aldermen, some of which are here tonight. Alderman Gary McComb, I'd ask them to stand if they wouldn't mind, also John Urbis, Barb Hughes, and Bill Pearson. If you guys wouldn't mind just standing up so people could, you know, recognize you, I'd appreciate it. These folks are the ones who have the vote, and they work very, very hard. And, you know, I just appreciate the trust that they have in me. They've got a lot of experience in construction trades, or health care, and the law, working in nonprofits, and we've got a really great council, and they work well together. It is truly a team effort. I also want to thank, I couldn't thank her enough, Sandra Ripley, who is my administrative assistant. She's at the back, and she does more to make me look good than anybody ever could. Keeps me on time, is just hardworking and very professional, and I couldn't appreciate enough edited this presentation tonight. I also want to thank our department heads. Brian Manwaring is here handling some of the technical things as we're streaming this on the Internet this evening, so that people could watch from their homes and hopefully catch up on some things. So I appreciate all of them very, very much, those that are here and those that are not, because they are really the heartbeat of the city. They're the ones that really get things done for people, and I appreciate it greatly. So with that, we'll jump right into tonight's town hall meeting and presentation. And there's a lot that's happened in the last 12 months. I'm very proud that over the last three years, we have not stood still as a city. We are a city that is on the move. We're a city that's getting things done. We're a city that's making progress, I think both governmentally and also in the business sector. And I'm very, maybe pleased with that. So today, I'll highlight some of the positives and a few of the negatives, and lay out some of the goals for the coming year, and then, as I said earlier, take your questions. And I also want to let folks know there are some forms at the back that if you want to fill out something, maybe there's something you want to share that might be more confidential that you wouldn't want to share in an open setting. Those are at the back, and you can drop them in our little drop bag back there at the end of the evening as well. So I think that's all the housekeeping that I needed to take care of here at the beginning of the night, and we'll jump right into it. One of the things that I'm going to start with, a point that I'm proud of for two reasons, and that's that I had 376 meetings in the last year, and probably about 300 or 275 of those were with individual residents about individual problems. This is during my office hours on Wednesday and Thursday nights, and I'm not proud of that because I've got a halo over my head or because I'm stuck in the office just meeting all the time. I'm proud of it because I wanted to be accessible when I came into office, and I think I've done a good job of keeping my word on that. And I just, I want to be as accessible as I possibly can, and I wanted to highlight this at the beginning, because those meetings that I have, and I know that the aldermen have as well, just out in the neighborhoods and around town, that communication has fostered an environment that is open and transparent, and I think it's working for people. And so I'm going to continue to do that. And that's really the only thing on this list tonight that is specific to me, because, again, I can't emphasize enough how much this city government is a team made up of residents and governmental officials in the business community, et cetera. Next up is the new wastewater treatment plant. I couldn't be more pleased with the progress here either. This has been sorely needed for many years, and Jim Stewart is here in our audience tonight. He's our foreman at the wastewater treatment plant. Jim is, I don't know if anybody remembers the old television show MacGyver or not. He had an ability to get out of tight situations with a matchstick and roll a Scotch tape and, you know, a salt shaker. And we've asked Jim Stewart to essentially be the MacGyver of the wastewater treatment plant for quite a long time. That facility was built in 1958, and frankly, it is by the grace of God that that thing, and Jim's hard work, and many others, that it has continued to function properly. And I'm very pleased about the fact that we broke ground on that back at the end of July of last year, and we are about two and a half, maybe three months ahead of schedule on getting that completed. And when I say "we," it's really River City Construction. They had built dozens of these plants before, and their experience in doing it is, at the end of the day, going to wind up saving the city money on the project, because they've done a phenomenal, phenomenal job. I also wanted to just, oh, I skipped over one here. These are just a couple of overhead shots. And I don't know if you can still hear me, but obviously, these are the clarifying tapes, and these are some administrative buildings, and then that's a ground-level shot of some of the work being done there. You know, at this point, we've still got a plant that we can't get to whenever the water gets too high, and so that's been a challenge as well at times, and we hope to work on that as well in the coming years. So I'm just very, very pleased with the progress there, and that's a couple of photos. I would add that after tonight's presentation, this will all be posted online for your review Part of the ongoing business development that everybody, I think, has seen is the corner of 13127. I'm sure you've all seen that that's coming down. The Apple Dome is, I didn't go by there today, it may be all the way down by today, and the Apple Tree Inn is gone. I respect greatly the purpose that those places serve for the community over the years. You cannot imagine the number of people that have come up and shared with me memories of swimming in the pool there, family members coming in and staying there. A lot of memories in that place, and so in a sense, it was bittersweet to see it go. But I really believe that corner and that development is the first domino that has fallen to start revitalizing our town in a really big way, because there's going to be approximately a $20 million investment built back in there. When the developer was here last, you know, he said, "I'm building a hotel, I'm building a gas station, and I don't know what the third thing's going to be yet." And we're very lucky to have him in town. To expand on that a little bit, if you didn't know, he is the developer that built the Holiday Inn in Sparta. He owns a gigantic, I believe, 800,000-square-foot underground storage facility in Val Meyer, Illinois. He has a proven track record of getting things done that he starts, and I'm, I really believe that that's going to really help revitalize the town. One other thing that I didn't list here about that revitalization, the former Jackson County Rehab Care Center. That building is currently, right now, as of a couple of weeks ago, being retrofitted on the inside. The drug abuse and alcohol abuse treatment facility that had come and asked to move in there, they are now actively moving forward. And that's going to mean another, somewhere between 40 and 50 jobs, once that's up and running. They told me the other day they have a deadline of September to be open, and if we can have 50 new jobs on the corner and 50 jobs coming into the Rehab Care Center, that'll mean a lot for our community, and that was just an amendment that I made earlier this evening. We did have three clickers for the PowerPoint presentation, but none of them wanted to work, so I'm operating this wireless mouse as best I can, anyway. Up next is the comprehensive plan. Cities that are home rural communities, which means that we can levy additional taxation at the local level if we so desire, are required to have comprehensive plans on file. The comprehensive plan on file in my office, when I came in, was dated 1964. There was some work done on that in the '90s, and there has been some tweaking on it over the years. But thanks to the Smizer Foundation, we received a $15,000 grant that's going to help us hire a consultant, and the Plan Commission is currently in that process and have met four or five times. This is essentially the roadmap to the community, and in the future, we're going to be having meetings similar to this to get feedback from residents on what they want that roadmap to look like, you know? What we think ought to be the transportation priorities, or what we think the housing priorities, or what we think the business priorities or governmental priorities ought to be. And I want it to be the best plan it can be, and I want to thank the Smizer Foundation for helping us get that underway. They've been a blessing to this community and to the Ava community as well over the Now, I know these are probably difficult to see because we maybe overloaded our slide a little bit, but the efforts to combat crime in Murphysboro have continued, and they've been very vigorous, and I think our police department is better trained as a department today than they were three years ago. In fact, I know they are. They're better equipped than they were three years ago, and I think that our police department is changing behavior. And Chief Hollow has said this over and over again. We're not in the business of just writing tickets to write tickets. We're in the business of interacting with the community so that behavior changes so that we're a safer community. And again, like I said, I don't know if you can necessarily see all those. In 2015, 2,268 traffic warnings were written, and I think that a lot of times, you achieve the same result by walking up, having a conversation with somebody, and them going on about their way. Now, that's not always the case, but I'm not going to go through all these. And I don't know that people really realize how much activity comes in. 1,714 911 calls in 2015. We had 4,205 phone-initiated calls in 2015. We had 3,819 officer-initiated responses, and 852 people in 2015 just simply walked in and said, "I have an issue of some kind." That is a busy police department that is responding, and I think that, I think that our crime rate is dropping because of it. And so I'm proud of the work that they're doing. We continue our demolition and cleanup efforts. This is one of those, in my book, no brainers. Whenever we clean up vacant and dilapidated properties, it raises surrounding property values, and it eliminates eyesores. And there's no downside to it. You know, we certainly have to maintain a budget for that. I think two years ago, we spent about $50,000. Last year, I think about $40,000 tearing down homes. There's probably people here tonight who say, "Well, you haven't got to the one next to my house yet." We're working on them. We really are. There's ones close to St. Andrew's School we're going to be taking care of very soon. And so I'm proud of that, and that needs to continue to be a focus, because it is certainly important. If I could go back just one slide quickly, I do want, I almost forgot to mention, you may notice in the middle of this slide, the Crime Stoppers logo. We are in partnership with the Jackson County Crime Stoppers, and if we now have the ability for residents who know or have information about a crime, if it leads to an arrest, people can be rewarded with cash money. And so, you know, they say the old saying, "Thick is thieves." It's interesting, thieves don't, they get less thick around Christmas time, you know? Whenever it might be nice to have a little bit more money in their pocket. And so I'm happy that we've partnered with them, and that's just one other step that was taken in order to help combat those problems. In 2015, we tore down five homes. I also want to mention, back to the demolition and cleanup efforts, don't forget that the city storage area on Shoemaker Drive opened on the second and fourth Fridays of every month from 7:30 to 3:30. If you've got landscape waste around the yard, you've had to clear out some bushes, you've had to clean things up at home, you can take them down there, drop them off at no charge. And that's something we continue to do as a service to try to help keep our community as clean as we possibly can. Couple other items here. One, we did receive delivery of the new fire truck this year. That came via a grant from former Congressman Bill Enyard. It was built to our specs. I don't remember, and I don't know if Sandra can give me a thumbs up or one of the aldermen. I think that wound up costing the city about $80,000. Does that sound right, Bill? I think. And the grant was $266,000. And so anytime you can replace a key part of your public safety equipment, this replaced an engine from 1987, and get it for a very small percentage of what it would have cost us otherwise, that's certainly a positive thing. And it came through FEMA, that grant did, and I greatly appreciate former Congressman Enyard getting that for us, and now we've finally taken delivery. The Sunset Concerts, those went very well last year. At Town Center Park, we had attendance between 750 up to 1,000 people. Of course, those are estimates. And in my opinion, it's certainly good for the community. I know that the Dairy Queen, I know the Jack's Meat Market, I know that 17th Street, all were very happy with those Thursdays in August, because it brought people in from out of town. I ran into a family from Cape Girardeau who had come up and enjoyed it, and they saw a flyer, I believe, for car shows, which are going to be coming up soon on Saturdays, and he was into the vintage automobiles and heard about it that way, and then came back for the car show weeks later. And so, you know, that's just one story, but I know there's other stories like that intermingled into these kinds of events, and we're looking forward to doing those again this, this August on Thursdays. Business growth and loss. We had a number of businesses that came, new additions to town this year. Polka Dots and Paisleys, Bling It On, Squeaks Customs, Smiley's Bike Apparel just opened up last week, Farmer's Insurance relocated, The Whole House Spitting Breakfast is going to be opening soon. We had a number of expansions of business. That included Samron, Big Muddy Brewing, Brew's Brothers, H&R Block, Martel's Pizza relocated, Southern Blooms, The Smile Place in Murphysboro on 14th Street, Art of Hair. We have got a vibrant business community that's on the move here, and that doesn't mean we still don't have challenges. I mean, you can drive down Walnut Street and you can see the Gilenberg Building. You know, you can, you can drive down Walnut Street and you can see the Murphysboro American Building. You can see what used to be Tippy's, now Murphy's Pub and Grill, or was Murphy's Pub and Grill. And so there's an ebb and flow to these things. But I believe that as these jobs come back into town, whether it be at the Rehab Care Center or down at the corner, we're going to have a larger customer base, and I hope that we can see some of those things just continue to flourish and grow. So it's always a struggle, but I, I work as hard as I can to foster a business environment here that is, is a positive one for growth. This is just sort of a fun thing. This was one of my little pet projects from about a year ago. I was being interviewed on WJPF, and Tom Miller said, "You know, when I think about Murphysboro, I always think it's the barbecue capital of Illinois." And I said, "You know, Tom, don't even tempt me with that." And so we kind of had a little bet on the side. He said, "Yeah, I don't think you'll get it done." And I said, "All right." I said, "Then we'll bet some barbecue on it. That only makes sense." And so we started some petitions, and we got the momentum going, and you see the signs on the edge of town. You talk about, how does this help? It's good PR. We got statewide media coverage because of it. And Southern Q, which is a barbecue restaurant that had operated in Carbondale for many years and had closed, is now going to be reopening here, and he cited that designation as one of those things that attracted him to come to Murphysboro. And this is just a picture of myself and Terry Bryant there in the General Assembly. So I didn't want to belabor things tonight. There's certainly a number of other things I could have went over in terms of what we've done in the last 12 months. But looking forward in the next year, you know, we've got some goals in completion of the wastewater treatment plant. We talked about that earlier. In a way, I'll be sad to see that complete, because we've got some temporary jobs going down there that it's nice to have those folks working in town, but that will be completed within the year. I continue to work to try to attract a tenant to the Farmer Kerrwood property. I think that we're going to be able to do some things with that this year. Finalizing a border agreement with Carbondale, that's in progress and has been hanging out there for a long time. One of the things that I put in here just last evening was address drainage issues in town. I have several things that get brought to my attention on a frequent basis. This is certainly one of them. And, you know, there are drainage issues throughout town, especially in the Roberta Drive area that I'm very aware of. There are some things that I think can be done to try to help that. In fact, I was told that some of our new lift stations that are part of the wastewater treatment plant may help some of that stormwater runoff and to keep it from backing up as much. And so that's something I hope to look at in the coming year. One of my pipe dreams is continuing to try to get the 127 expansion to Nashville done. I think that would certainly be positive for the community. We continue to work on 7th Street, and tonight, as I mentioned, we're streaming this live online. We're, I've had put on the agenda for the coming city council meeting, streaming the council meetings online. You know, that's something a lot of communities are doing, and I think it would be a positive thing, but we'll have that discussion at the council level and, and see where it goes. But that's something I hope to get done, too. One of the fun things, I had no idea how many people wanted to drive a golf cart in town. I, you know, Ducoy did it, then Ava, then, I believe, Pinneyville, and then Carbondale was the last straw for some of my residents here in Murphysboro. After Carbondale passed that, one of the folks that calls me often called me and said, "They beat us again. They beat us again." You know? "I'm going to have to move to Carbondale so I can drive my golf cart." So, you know, we deal with things of all varieties of nature, from public safety to golf carts to cats in trees, and I hope that we can get that done soon. It's something we're currently talking about at the council level. And then finally, the city website. Brian Manwaring has done a great work keeping a lot of the technological side of things with the city going. He just doesn't have time. And so, you know, during this year's budget process, we allocated a little bit of extra money that he requested to help hire somebody part-time, a few hours, and they're going to be working on keeping the city website more up to date and, and updated, I guess, with new pictures and news stories and things of that nature. So those are some of the goals that we hope to accomplish in the next 12 months. Some of the things that we've, we've gotten done in the last 12 months, that is the state of the city address, I guess, if you, if you would want to call it that. And with that, a couple of questions everybody asks me, and really, it's come down to one. I talked about golf carts earlier, because I thought somebody would probably bring this up tonight anyway, so I thought I'd just address it before we even got to the question and answer session. I get a lot of questions about the Malio or the Old Depot. That building is certainly problematic. When you drive by, it's like they've had the same scaffolding up, and I think that there's ghosts at night that come by and move it around a little bit, but nothing seemingly ever gets done. We have enforced our codes on that a number of times. The fines that we assess are paid, and then we start all over again. It is a historic property, and I don't think that the people in Murphysboro would like us to set forth tearing it down, because we'd like to see it be a vibrant building again. But I want to let you know that I'm as aware of it as anybody else is here this evening, and we're continuing to try to put pressure on the owner and the person that's working on that to complete whatever work it is that they hope to someday get done. And the other thing is, a lot of people say, "I need to have a meeting with you." As I said, I'll book in the presentation with this. If you need to have a meeting with me, call City Hall, we'll set it up. I'm not afraid of them. We'll, we'll meet all day, all night, until we address the problems and, and get them squared away. So with that, I appreciate you so much for being here. It's not an accident that you're here tonight. You're here tonight because you care about your community, and the business of being a citizen is an important thing. And so I thank you for being here this evening. It means a lot to me. And so with that, I'll open it up to any questions that anybody might have. Yes, sir?
My name is Oliver Dunn. I'm mostly called Larry. I have four questions, really. One of them is not related to the other three, so maybe I'll start off with that one.
Okay.
According to a recent news report that I saw, Illinois is one of the already two states in which drinking water of some schools and daycare centers have tested positive for LIV. I'm just wondering, has there been any testing in our Murphysboro schools?
Well, Oliver, I think that's a good question, because the issue that you raise is one that comes out of the Flint, Michigan area, obviously, and, and we know that that's been a tragic situation for that community. The best I can tell you is that I don't know the answer to your question right now, but I can get the answer to that question for you, and I can get it from Tim Lee, most likely, and from Chris Grody, the superintendent of schools. It's not something that I'm really privy to on a day-to-day basis, but I think it's a legitimate question, and I think it's one that I can certainly get the answer to for you.
The other three questions are all related to the Roberta Drive and the flooding problem?
Sure.
There are three separate things that I'm looking at here. We know that heavy rains in any season of the year often cause flooding in that lower section of the Roberta Drive. And behind the houses on the odd-numbered addresses, we see a problem with that ditch, and then it opens up into Mike Austin's yard, and you said before that they thought that maybe they could cure part of that with this lift station that they're working on. on. I just think that maybe this is a little bit more urgent now, since we've seen that the mosquitoes with the Zika virus have moved into Illinois, and this could be a health problem, not just a nuisance problem for, on Roberta Drive. So it looks like that needs to be looked into, what should be done about that. Question number, the next item here, the flooding of the street seems to me is a completely different issue from the flooding of that back area that goes to the pumpkin station, because often with the rain, we saw that back in the 1990s, when we had that big rain and flood on a, on a Sunday morning, water came up to within two inches of my front door, and the back section had not flooded yet. This is a very quick thing, and I think it probably goes back to when Glenn Williams put in all of that, and they had some problem with the street being put in wrong, had to be re-did. But it seems like all of the water that comes from Seaman Lane and up on the upper part of Roberta Drive, all of that eventually winds up at the sewer in front of my house, and it gets blocked up. It's not big enough to handle that to take it wherever it's supposed to go. So it seems like that's a separate issue that needs to be looked at. And my last thing here, there are four or five yards, including mine, that in these big rains, they flood. And I think maybe it's part of the landscaping problem when those houses were put in. And I, people, my neighbors, they even came out in the backyard when I used to, to raise tropical fish. I'd be out there netting mosquito larvae by the thousands that feed them to my, to my tropical fish, and saving the neighbors a lot of mosquito bites.
I guess there's a silver cloud or a silver lining to every cloud.
Can I not take care of tropical fish anymore?
Yeah.
They're just going to get wherever they go. I had, I had intended sometime back to landscape the back of my yard, so that that would not flood in there, but someone, I don't remember who it was anymore, told me that I can't do it. That if I do something to my yard, it negatively impacts other yards around me, and there are three around me that, that are the problem, that I just can't do it. Is there a solution to that?
Well, Mr. Dunn, I'm not sure that I completely understand. The last point you were making about you, someone said you couldn't landscape the, an area in the back of your yard. I, I don't know, and I don't know that any of the other aldermen know why you wouldn't be able to do some landscaping in, in your yard.
If I were to build up the, my backyard, it would cause the other three yards to flood more. It would be a negative impact.
Well, I suppose that would be a civil matter, essentially. I mean, your, your neighbors could, I assume, of course, you know, the old saying is, you can, you can indict a ham sandwich or whatever, the saying is. I mean, anybody could bring suit, I guess, if they thought they were being negatively impacted. I don't think, from the city's point of view, that we could tell you, you can't build up your yard or do landscaping work there. To just address your other points, you and I met, you know, in my office a few months ago. You were there, and we talked. The flooding on Roberta Drive, as I understand it, is several things come together, and that's that it is a, a lower-lying area than some of the surrounding area. Obviously, there is that drainage that comes through the back of your properties. I walked the railroad trestle over 14th Street Extension North last summer, and walked it all the way out to where that culvert is, where eventually the water coming north out of town draining goes across onto a gentleman who owns property on the north side of that. It's my understanding that dropping that culvert would help a lot of that water move a lot quicker. That one property owner still is unwilling to let us come across his property to do that work, and there's no way to get to it from the south, because it's so heavily wooded. Now, obviously, it was put in sometime, I guess, by the railroad, and I don't know all the history. But all I can tell you at this point is that I will continue to look at it. I will put it back on the, on the committee agenda. I'll welcome you to the committee meeting when we put it on there, and maybe we can get some, some sharper minds than mine to think about how we can fix that. Because it is a problem, but I don't know what the solution is.
Mayor, we may want to have, have a, if you can kind of work, you cannot do anything with the, the north shore, next to it, or whatever. I, I'm not aware of one that fits home in Portland, because then we can't keep up with all of the summer, you know, 1800s, so there's just no way out of that, you know? Because, you know, but I think we should actually, that's like...
Sure. Thank you, Barb. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Will they have a care of the old tax roll?
In terms of property taxes? Yeah, the property will be back on the tax roll again. You know, for years, it operated as a government facility, and, you know, the Jackson County Rehab Care Center was not on the tax roll. But this will be on the tax roll, since it's being held by a private company, which will help the school district and, and things of that, that nature with, with funding. Yeah, sir, that's a good question. Anything else? Yes, sir?
The Apple Tree Inn?
Oh, yeah, I've, yeah, one-track mind when it came to time somebody says hotel now. You know what? I haven't spoken, Dan Bost is the owner of that property. Rachel Enzor, do you have something?
Well, I've seen a lot of historical, uh, national, especially, man, and I just talked to him today, and he started again, and he's gotten second.
Well, that's good.
I mean, he ran out of skin and hair for a while, and he carried a really long, and had a lot of, but he is putting up the guards on the windows, the painted ones, painted wooden guards over the glass for now, and, and then he hooked them on the inside. So we, you know, it's starting again. I think seeing some of the new stuff in town has given him a kind of rebirth of his energy. Yeah, it's my understanding that he wants to have a, on the lower part where the restaurant was, that he wants to have a wine and jazz concession with food, and then he also wants to have part of the hotel be hotel rooms, and another part of it be a hostel for bicyclers, because it sits on that biking area. And there would be certain setups for them, places for them to work on their bike, hang their bike, various things like that. And since he's a, you know, a long-distance bicyclist, he understands those conditions and needs. And I think that's kind of a very neat idea, so, yeah, he's working on it.
Yeah, I, I know that when he first purchased it, and this has been probably eight years ago now, seven, eight years ago, the farmer owner had stored a bunch of clothing in it and was, was trying to essentially create a place for homeless people, people that were struggling. And then that person won the lottery, as I understand, and decided he wasn't interested in that anymore. And when you, when you...
Do you use the building?
Yeah. He, and, but when you went in there, when Dan bought it, I remember I went in there with him, and there was a tree growing up from the, from the floor all the way through the roof. And so that was cleared out. He did spend $60,000, I think, on a new roof. There's no question, he needs to get, you know, some more progress be seen there, but I'm glad to hear that he's working in, in that direction.
Any other questions?
Good. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I'm just wondering about the, the Malleo building.
Mm-hmm.
What was, were thinking when they started to repurpose that, what they wanted to do with it?
Well, that's been a moving target. I mean, I've, I've had conversations with the gentleman that's working on the building or had been working on the building, and I'd heard sort of a coffee type of place. I heard a restaurant at one point. You can hear about anything you want to hear. And so the ultimate plan, I think, was for retail space. That's probably the best I could say. Yes?
The chicken, former chicken restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
Is it open?
It is not. I, to be honest with you, it obviously opened first as The Hungry Bear, and then it switched over to Murphy's. And essentially, one day, I looked up and noticed there was a for-sale sign out in front of it. And that wasn't that long ago, maybe a month, maybe, approximately. And, you know, I was in there one time, and I think they maybe had some things they could have tweaked about their business model and just customer service and things of that nature that would have made them more successful. Yeah?
Are we, is there a cleanup day this year?
That's on the committee agenda for this Monday, and it'll probably be, the actual question for the committee on Monday is cleanup, spring or fall? So yes, there will be one.
I've, I've seen other towns, which usually come all down, they do kind of a yard, community yard sale day, that I think we need to do, along with the cleanup day. I don't live in the city limit, so I always get that on the water bill, and I do, but I just think we need to do a community yard sale. I might encourage people to clean up their yards.
Yeah.
I mean, not, not everybody wants to haul everything off, so they want to make money off of it, so we kind of incorporate...
Sure.
A yard sale, community yard sale day with a cleanup day?
Last year, we moved it to the fall, because I was of the opinion that if we're going to clean the town up, then why not do it as close to Apple Festival as possible? Because that's when we have the most visitors in town every year. You know, you can debate either one, you know? I mean, there's just something about spring cleaning that makes sense, and it's something we've all heard of many times. But, yeah, I'll, I'll make a note of that. I mean, I think a lot of times, you know, it, it just takes the city saying, "Yeah, we're on board," and then individuals stepping up and helping organize it. So, you know, if you know some people, I'd love to, be happy to meet with them that might want to help with that kind of effort.
My second thing is Christmas time, which, I mean, it's part of the unique shop, so I know we're doing, like, some of the Christmas. But in Carterville, last year, I went to their Christmas downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And it was pretty much every business in town, every church in town, or anybody here that's been to it, that it's really, really neat.
Yeah.
Everybody breaks the table out, and, I mean, this is through actual main street Carterville. And they do cookies and coffee, everything's free, you don't have to pay anything, and everybody in the community comes out. I mean, it was packed all the way downtown Carterville. I know there's, we have somebody new at the chamber, right?
We do. Steve Webb is the new director of the Murphy'sboro Chamber.
And I was just wondering if maybe the unique shops could hook up with the chamber and kind of do it together, because not, our unique shops is more like for retail and, you know, business?
Sure.
But the churches and the other businesses aren't involved with that, you know? So I don't know if, how we can put it together, give it to everybody.
Well, I know that Steve is, I've known him for quite some time, and he is open-minded. He will listen. And I think that he's going to, as anybody, when they come into a new job, I'm sure he's going to want to, in a sense, he doesn't have to prove himself, not to me, because I've known him, but I'm sure he's going to want to make a really good impression. And so, yeah, I would encourage that, and anything the city can do to help foster that, whether it be stuff on the back of the water bill, the citywide newsletter. I get a lot of requests. People send me emails, say, "Would you put something on, on my Facebook page?" Because I know a lot of people watch that. So, yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. And I know that it was a great event over there, because I heard a lot of buzz about it. Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with that.
And we want that buzz to be about Murphy'sboro.
I know. And it reminded me of Murphy'sboro when I went over there, the first year I'd ever attended, which they said it, you know, tripled its size...
Wow.
...last year, and I mean, they've had it a couple years, but they have sleigh rides going down the street. And the thing was, it didn't cost anything.
Yeah.
Kids were of lower income were there, you know, it, it wasn't, you didn't have to spend the money.
Sure.
And everybody in the city just came together. I mean, I don't know if, a few people in the bow of these businesses would say they would want to be involved. I would do it. I mean...
Yeah, I'd be happy to share Steve's phone number with you after the meeting. I know he'd be happy to, to talk to you about it. And I, I think even the gentleman that was running those sleigh rides last year contacted me about doing them in Murphy'sboro, but we never were able to connect, for whatever reason. And so anytime, anytime we can grow this community and, and have more things going on, and the things that we do have going on make them better, obviously, I, I would support that. Be happy to work with you on it. Anything else? Blaine?
I was just wondering, I think we talked about this one time before, about 2017 solar eclipse, and, and I know that Mayor Henry on Carbondale, he has, he has a whole list going on. Could you give us any more information on planning in Murphy'sboro or around the New York's, about?
Well, yeah, and for, Blaine's asking about the 2017 eclipse, which is going to happen in August of 2017. It's going to be a total solar eclipse, and we are, here in southern Illinois, going to be in the path of the longest duration of that eclipse. I think about 2 minutes and 45 seconds or something. And so it should be a very dramatic scene sometime around 1 o'clock, I think. If it's sunny outside, of course, you know, there'll probably be a massive cold front move through or something. But they're expecting NASA is going to be at SIU. They're sending some of their top people to be here in the area. Estimates range upwards of 100,000 more people in southern Illinois over that week. And one thing I hope is that a new hotel is built on the corner, because there's going to be a lot of people in town. And I know that 17th Street, they're going to be making their area where they hold the cook-off, the teams are at, for people to plug up campers and whatnot that are going to be in town to watch the eclipse. I've had one meeting with Mayor Henry about that, and it was more of just a logistical thing, an informational thing for us, to tell us, you know, that, "Look, here's the date. I'm sure that we're going to want to maybe look at some more police force, you know, on that particular day." You know, solar, I know Big Money Brewing is brewing a special beer for that particular day. So it'll be interesting to see the different things that go on around it, the festivals and things that may happen. I don't really know that much more about it at this point, Blaine. Yes, ma'am?
Would you kind of have the farmer's market again?
It's a good question. I just met with a lady last night who has been one of our vendors for the last two years, and we had lost our previous farmer's market manager, a gal named Danae. She was a SIU graduate student. She did. She did an absolutely fantastic job. And a lady from Lindsay Farms met with me just last night, actually. And we do have a little bit of money in the budget for that, and we're going to be looking at May through October this year, same time on Saturday mornings. And, you know, that's something that's been sort of an experiment. I can't guarantee that we're going to do it again after this coming year. It's not been as successful as I hoped it would be in terms of the number of vendors. And, you know, not everything we're going to do is going to be an overwhelming success. I don't think that's been an abject failure, but it's not lived up to what I hoped it would. So we're going to keep going with it this year, and then we'll review that in the years to come.
You know, if you move it down to Jackson Square, it's going to be a good one.
You think so?
Oh, I know so, but people down there...
Well, that's true.
There's no business open at 8 o'clock in the morning, that's probably why, you know, people get discouraged, because there are a few people that come. You know, I've done pretty good with my stuff.
Yeah.
I sell ground, but there's nothing, there's no business open. And I think that's why, in the beginning, that's why you wanted to, of course, with that.
But there's nothing open. But you go down to Jackson Square, you've got McDonald's, you've got Kroger's, you've got, go down there at 8 o'clock in the morning.
Well, yeah, I, I...
Well, yeah, I know how busy it is. You know, one of the things about having it where it is is that's city-owned property.
That's true.
And of course, I don't know that Rural King or Kroger or whomever would object if we moved it down there.
It would drain them all.
The guy running the produce department at Kroger, he might, I don't know.
He could buy some stuff at the Kroger store.
Right.
But it would be, it's just a suggestion.
Sure.
It would, I think it would really go. I've ran farmer's markets before, and everything's there.
Sure.
You know? It's just a suggestion.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The lady you talked to, I know who you're talking about. She's wonderful, too.
Yeah, I think she's gonna do a great job.
I will, so too.
Yes, ma'am?
I have a question and a comment relates to what she was talking about, the Christmas thing that had here. I hope that the city and the council or whoever is interacting with and supporting these unique shops in what they're trying to do. If not, you ought to be. That's probably enough said on that. But my comment is that I was super impressed with how pleasant it was, how, what a good job they did. If you were involved in that, kudos. You know, the art thing as well as downtown, I mean, I've lived in this town my entire life, and it's been a long time since I saw people on a Saturday walking down Walnut Street, talking with everybody, chit-chatting, going in and out of stores, blue bags, you know? It was great. It was really great. And so, you know, I just want to reinforce that whatever you guys are doing to work with these people and help these people, that's where it needs, it's gotta happen like that.
Well, yeah, I certainly agree with you. I know there was one day, especially when the unique shops in December, when they really promote a, you know, a Christmas shop local type of campaign. I don't know what you mean. There was a lot of people out shopping. And I, look, I make a point, one of the ways we can all support, not just the city government in a sense, is to, you know, actively make those decisions to buy things locally. I made an effort, I bought every single Christmas present this year in Murfreesboro, and made a point to, you know, spread my money around in town as well. And so, you know, that's how residents and government, you know, we can close down the streets, and we can do things to help these special events. But I think you make a great point. The unique shops are doing a great job, and we'll support them in any way we can. All right? Well, thank you all for being here. I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.